We will call the Tuesday office club 25. Green County Council, name of the order.
I'm Mark Harris. I'm Dave Black. John Lennon. Bruce Vance.
Here.
Phil Dowling.
Here.
And Jimmy Gilliam.
Here.
First time on the agendas to approve amendments for June 10th, June 25th, June 26th, June 27th. I have a motion to second this ring discussions. Changes need to be made? Harry Nardroco.
And Dave Black.
Has it changes been made?
Has any change been made?
I was supposed to say yes.
Doctor, can I take your side?
Yes.
And John Morgan? Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Phil Dowling. Jimmy Gilliam.
Richard Howerton said that he was going to be a little bit late while some Mark Harris called in, said he still works, so we'll skip Richard Howerton and come back again. Go back to the audience now. Brenda Chalks.
Well, you didn't answer my question earlier, but I got a note. I was asking about the dish on there on the railroad tracks behind my house. It blocked it, the water stands back there. Anyway.
I'll follow back up to Josh again. Josh is over at the signaling. He made a phone call for us on the fellow that appears, I'll ask him to follow back up again. He has some population.
Okay.
So that's the easiest way to deal with CSX as well, Jacksonville. I'll follow back up with Josh, I'll call him in a second.
Okay. The other question is, the house occurs from the historical new clack church of Winifred Street? There used to be more black sites.
I'll hand that over to Stephen McGinnis and let him.
Oh, remove it forward and tear that down. Remove it forward. Yeah, we filed suit on that several weeks ago. He was served and we've got the act of everything, so I can't tell you when it will be coming down. And it's always possible that the judge doesn't sustain our request to allow it.
Oh, okay.
But I know that that was filed on what day it comes out from. I don't think.
You know, people weren't living without water or electricity. And they look like they're trying to dig up the power grid, but the place is still a mess.
No, I think it's clear that we're looking at it simply as not.
I was going to say, or the chimney now, there's a hole. That's, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
There's also a little fire.
Still living in it.
They're in and out of it. They carry stuff out, carry stuff out here.
Yeah. And they go in at night and nobody knows. They haven't think anybody knows.
There's ten around the bottom, big ground.
Charles Lewis.
Yes, I've got a couple things I wanted to ask about. I've been under the weather a little bit and I missed the last couple meetings.
I wanted to know. You can do your sister to the dog, you usually do.
What?
You should have been telling your sister to the dog.
Well, okay. Anyway. Anyway.
Hopefully told on you.
It don't matter. He always throws me under the bed. The creek. Have we heard anything? Have we done anything?
Here's where we're standing still. USDA hasn't got like this number approved from Windsor Street, Jefferson Street to the vicinity of S. Elster's house.
I think that is.
Changing the separate society.
You need to kind of.
Josh, can you? With that being said, it also works in conjunction with FEMA. So the fifth street areas is under FEMA part, which we're getting very ill with everyone after. FEMA is here on July 23rd. The only way that the city's going to be able to afford to put in a box code over any fishery is with FEMA. So we declared that as a disaster, so whenever I declare it as a local disaster, then Judge Hall declares, and then it goes up to the governor. He declares, and then it goes to the president, then FEMA comes in. So FEMA's already been here. It's myself, Roger Harris, Howerton's contractor, the gas company, all met over there on July 23rd. And we're waiting now for FEMA to give back with us on their recommendation. Roger Harris signed off on something today, and I don't know if it was for Fifth Street or if it was for Second Street. So that will all happen. Long story short, if we put in a box code, we're going to be going further in each direction of what's there now. Those will have to go by transportation cabinets, rules and regulations. So we can be going further, so it'll be a shorter distance of which we'll need to be coming back. So we'll have to work with USDA and we're having to work with FEMA as well.
Okay. My, my question, the problem with the bridge is there is elderly people on the street. My husband's had a lung transplant. Their ample window is at that store. The water's been there three or four times already blocking that road. If there's a train on the tracks, there's no way to get an ambulance in there.
So all, all that has been in rotting to things. We haven't counted the, counted the homes, took them down, showed them where the water comes over the road down by Jesus, showed them the water coming over Second Street, all over the Fifth Street. If there's a road, if there's a train on the track, if there's a disaster, we're going to make the house catches on fire. There's low emergency, if you can get in, it will be a nightmare. So that's one. Just that we've been causing the damage to the bridge, I use that also with FEMA to try to speak across the city. So I'm hoping since July 23rd, they told us when they left here six days, we can move the motion. But that's the federal. So that might be a little bit longer.
But you don't want to ride anybody or do anything.
I don't want anybody doing anything around that. We want to, we want to play nice, get what we hand, and then we'll go.
Play nice to what we're saying?
See, see your brother. Some people on the river stream, a lot of people can't put metal across it like it's a hose, and they get on the streets and stuff.
Because it has been declared structurally unsafe.
If it goes side to side, actually being there on something solid. And when you're on the bridge, man, you don't get side of that.
That's the best way. So we'll say, if we make an obstacle for cars to go over, and then FEMA's eyes are something wrong with the bridge, and it's already been structurally declared unsafe.
But we have more ideal time on the street. Okay, we give that money, and it's open, and they're like, so you got, I'm talking about herself and everybody else.
I understand that 110% of houses land over there blind is a bad, a bad art, and I get it, but I, we don't have $300,000 and some thousand dollars in our general fund to go build a, a box code. And if we can get $300,000 and some thousand dollars out of FEMA, then I think it's in our best interest to wait on FEMA to give us their recommendation, if they're going to give us the money or if they're not. If they're not going to give us the money, then what we'll have to do is when we're done with Second Street, or when we done with Second Street in the past, prior to me, is put in a code, which I don't want to do.
I don't have that going on.
Exactly. And hopefully, I can't promise you guys this, but hopefully Second Street will be replaced with the box code today. Can't make any promises, but that's the word that I'm hearing. So we could be getting two box codes, I guess. We have to follow the strict FEMA guidelines when anything or dealing with the federal government. That's why the bridge was closed prior to January 23rd, well, sorry, July 23rd, because it's very structurally unsafe for my people. I hope I answered your question.
London, could you put something up on the highway on Route 23, because a lot of people turned down in there.
We've got to sign an order right now that's going to say bridge closed at the end. It just hasn't come in yet.
Before we get something else, or before you show this picture, I have to show you the, the long fact.
Right, there's also one speaking.
Well, I've got pictures of it here. I know the city, I know the city has stupor, but this is what it looks like. It's awkward over there. So, I mean, nobody's been there for at least five years. I don't know, I don't do the cross, but they're.
I may explain something. Trust me, I'm not trying to be very, very involved. The city of Green County, we're the lowest taxed, city of Green County, the lowest taxed city in Florida. We don't have a whole lot of money to go tearing down. Right now, right, I, right now, we've got, it's a one Winifred Street, actually three on Winifred Street, one on Park, one on L, one on East Main Street, six houses. So whenever you go and you tear these houses down, Stephen will be able to tell you, nine times I've paid, nine and three quarters times, out of ten, you cannot receive any of your money back. It's just money that's gone.
I have a question. Who owns the property?
I don't remember. I'll have to go back to the.
To me, it looks like the city could make them be responsible.
Generally, the property that's owned, so you can't find another person, if they had the money to tear it down, it's a thing. So the law has some value, but we have to sell those before we have to sell typically those for a year. So the way the city has to look at it, this is every city, this is the city green, but every city has to look at it is, it's just money out there. Because it would be very unusual for the city to be able to.
You're just tearing it down, you know what I'm saying? No. Okay, I mean, I'm just asking. Where do you think about it? I mean, as one's saying, it looks like somebody besides the city should be responsible.
I agree with you, but unfortunately, our hands are not the laws, and we have to go with the proper channels, and we have our attorney, the law and justice, if you want to come, the district judge, you're getting parole, you're getting in on the houses, that is really the story.
Okay. I have one more question, then I'm shutting. What is the deal that I cannot get any other cable except Armstrong?
Armstrong has the exclusive franchise in the city.
But is that not a monopoly?
Well, what I'll tell you, this is probably late nineties.
But I can get a lot, a lot better deal elsewhere, but I can't get it because it's in the city.
No, 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 the paper company will come in to bring, because they don't have any infrastructure. They don't have any infrastructure. So you're talking six, seven hundred homes that they run infrastructure to, and it's just not a money making profit for them to come and run their infrastructure. I tried to get spray group.
Yeah.
I tried to get any, back whenever I was on City Council.
Well, to me, I mean, it's monopoly. That's quite simple. Nobody else can come in, so they can charge whatever they want.
Yeah, what, five years? Well, I think right now, I think.
I've been here 30 years.
I'd have to go back and look, but I think it was either 10 or 20 years exclusive franchise that they gave you. I may be wrong.
I think it was long, I think it was a long term deal, because I was surprised.
What's the?
Once again, it's the same to every city. There are never any bids for cable in any city other than the cable company that's already.
Then how do all these other companies survive?
I don't know. I, 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 I don't run them and.
Well, you know what I'm saying? If they can't go, but certain places.
What I'm telling you, the audience is, is that I represent several cities, and there is never, there is, there is always one bid, and it's always from the person that has the bid. And one is right, it's because, and they already get wires here, and no one else is going to wire.
Yeah. That's for the city.
Get your TV from the internet if you want to say, okay? Me too.
What I'm getting, getting ready to.
I don't have.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll. I gotta get my kids fixed myself.
Pardon?
I have to get my kids fixed myself.
Well, tell me about them. Okay, okay.
All right, nobody else is on your office agenda, I need to get all the calendars. We've got to grab calendars. Hey, I mean, I've always got some duties for like this. I have one more to do.
Really? Um, there's been recently, a lot of kids had outlaw, and if these kids like 10 to 12 years old, uh, there was one of them that had a hog, a hog hard, a little kid behind, a hog hard, a little sled, and they did the job, went to church, went to the hard mall later, and also ran the police, ran the charities. Uh, so there's just been a lot of, and like, I know state regulation is anyone under the age of 16 from the operating, any other vehicle, not any cops on a street. You're just wondering how we could enforce that a little bit more. Because unlike the kids, the cops will tell them, we want you to stop, and then the next day they clear out.
And they're going, well, that should be finished.
I mean, we could have a officer that does it really, but it's others.
You gotta get to the parent.
Here's what I can take as far as setting from my chair. I don't have the authority to enforce laws. What I can do is what I just done, stand in the ordinance on the curb. But here's what I will tell you guys about law enforcement. I love my golf, and I honor it as much as what I want, because I don't have to. But it's going to come to a point where we're all will lose the groove. That's where it's coming. And I hate to see that. I hate to see that happen, but that's where it's coming. And Mike was just handing, he'll spread it out with the rest of the gentlemen on the police force, that we're going to start enforcing the nine o'clock, break the buds home, do whatever you all got to do. And if they got complaints, the parents coming out here, they're in the legislative body, they can take it up to the Green County Council. That ordinance is on books, it's highest part of Green County Council, they've given that ordinance, start enforcing. And if they got complaints, they can come back to this body, take it up.
One other question, about how about the ordinance, if they're not harmed or not harmed by the city, it's not a body, but after the first offense, is there monetary fines?
I'm sure, I'm sure it does go along with something like that, I'm sure Stephen wrote that.
Okay, well, you would pass the list.
Not to.
And another, I was driving, it was a scooter, and it was hard, and, I mean, if I didn't, you know, I had my headlights on, I could see them, but there's no light in front, you know. It's, it really comes at night, I'm just worried about the safety of those kids. Because sometimes they run in and out in front of cars, and they don't look, because they're either also on their phone, or, I, I'm just, I'm worried about their safety, and also, if I was to hit one of them, I would never be saying, I'm just, that's what I'm worried about. I just don't want people to.
We got a problem with hand whippings, they turn on their headlights. They don't have any bar. That's, that's bad.
The thing that I was just curious about, just to follow back up with Wendy's comment, and I'm, I, and I actually did go to the police and filed, and filed a report, I was going to file a report, but, because I was going out of town one day, and, and they were all over the vibe that going, like McDonald's, and we're in a little circle, we found the bottom, and, you know, and people, it was scary. It was very scary. And, but I was told, well, you know, you can file whatever you want to file, but, you know, it's going to end up causing everybody to lose their golf cart privileges, and I thought, I don't want to do that. And so I did file anything. I don't understand that comment, I don't. What, what, what caused it? What would cause that?
Stephen, I'll turn, I don't even know if you even know where I'm at, I'll, I'll hear you. Would you like to research on golf cart laws, or should any?
There's been a lot of amendments to state laws, I'll look at all of what's been said in the state law.
Wendy, I mean, you're the one that said that, I mean, you're the one that told me that, and, and other people that, I, so where, where are you coming from?
When did I talk to you?
After one of our meetings, the last time I was here, the last meeting, I was, went in, in the back, and he told me, and that's what I just, showed that to him, because I didn't want to be the person.
Here's what I can say, Mike, what I always said about golf carts on the.
Sorry?
What I always said about golf carts on the.
On the over path?
Yeah.
That's state road, they're not allowed to be there. They can't be ridden, and we can actually go on that bound.
So. I, I get that, I get that.
We can get on a state road too.
How would that cause everybody to lose their golf carts?
Right, whenever we research, I'm speaking years, I'm, we're not close by law, my idea, they have changes, Stephen just said, there's been a lot of amendments to the state law. My idea, and we weren't even close enough to a golf course, to allow a golf course to regulate within so many miles of a golf, golf courses. And then there was other restrictions, as well as head lots, turn lots, horns, maybe even stickers of some sort.
People started off, they're supposed to.
And then.
I'm sorry?
They started off, they're supposed to give them a statement, and then by the end of the statement, sir, they said they wouldn't.
And then the golf cart boom happened. So we have just kept it under the radar, radar, and hoping people would lease themselves. So that we would have to say, hey, no more golf courses. Because nobody wants to lose their golf courses. There's nothing any better than going down East Main Street and seeing five or six of your friends or your neighbors enjoying a ride on a golf cart. I see, those are street. But let's let Stephen research the amendments to the law, research our orders, and he can come back in the next meeting, and we'll see what we come up with.
Maybe we can add some teeth. I think, and add something where at least somebody's 16. I feel like if somebody's 16 years old, they've got enough, enough wits about them to not go over the old path. That's, that's.
16 years old.
16, 17. Can't see $60 a dollar, be on.
And they got home, home insurance too. Which was phenomenal, it wasn't much, it was like 10 bucks a year, but add it to your home, and they got quick into that. That's all they try. Just about 10 bucks a year, or like that.
Flatland, that's where people, earlier, they had the same problems up there. Their problem is with the dirt bikes and the wrecking bikes, they go so fast, we didn't end up cars. Pretty much says a motor's five speed, if they're having to 16 years makes, and had enough. Pretty much says a motor's five speed, if they're having two sixteen two's makes, and had an off, they're getting ready to pull something. So you guys all in agreement, let Stephen research our current city ordinance, what's it, come up.
Two things I hear, is about, is this about the city down there on the river? The city has got involved, that's private development, you know, I've had probably fifteen people in court, what's the city doing? The city's got nothing to do, am I not correct, Chris? Okay, that's why I tell them, but I'd like to get that out to everybody, that that's private enterprise, that's private development, and then they're. They're not spending any money on that boat. Definitely cause all splash man, the life. We didn't put any money in that downwater, right, other than the water. I see, it's got nothing to do with that, it's just a city's project, and I keep getting people, why we're going fast? We're not doing it, the library is doing it, correct? Thank you. But I understand.
Somebody did a complaint, and we passed all these losses. The next day, she had her ring, she's a time buyer one day. And then we. What does this pass law, if you don't enforce it, what's the worst?
But we haven't really passed any laws.
Yes, we did, yes, we did. The ordinance, sixteen drivers. That's what it should have passed ten years ago.
Actually passed that ordinance.
Yes, we discussed it. No, it was passed ten years ago. I don't know what I want to fight. Because back then, we had a bunch of kids running on our vehicles and stuff, and we were passed that law, and we took the videos off of them.
And that actually passed, because there was some years, I think it was discussed, but.
So is there money in agreement, to allow Stephen to research, if there's an ordinance available, along with the state laws, if you'll report back to us, and thanks again.
Hey, Lenny, can I say something about this, with the fair coming, that these kids are on a weekly basis, are going in and out of fairgrounds, is there a way that we can ask them? With all, and for that nine period, to son like Jamie, one of them's gonna get hurt with the fairgrounds, it's gonna be crazy those kids.
I would say, that probably needs to be coordinated with the.
He's asking, he's asking. I'm asking you for.
Mike, you need to talk to Rick Stamper, Mr. Coffey, the fair boards requesting no golf carts in the fairgrounds, is that correct?
They don't want kids on scooters, electric bikes, and scooters, and golf carts. Kids, not adults. Some adults have to go in there on golf carts for health reasons, and you can't get a wheelchair in there because of the trouble.
So the fair board's asking for no kids, electric scooters, things of that nature, Mike.
Thank you.
Want to take care of that?
Is it just, people, have you had people that can ride them, or any adult can ride?
You would never have any way of police them out, and because it is a state hall, that you have big sixteen, that should have a. State hall's a minimum of what you can have in the city. An adult can ride a golf cart.
Adults.
You're sixteen, but if you're sixteen.
It's a second class, like you drive.
Like a lot sixteen.
Since we're on the fair, uh, Green County Fair, but obviously, uh, I will let you know that Grayson's offered to come down and help us, Lawland's offered to come down and help us, I'm sure the sheriff's offered to be there as well. If you're here to be with the fair, same way they've done with us, put the fortunes alive.
If, we can contact the state police, they hold it up.
Yeah, I agree. A little unusual.
I'm just an in-golf cart owner, I'm a first career player, and I don't want to break any rules. Can you just not go to the parents, and tell the parents that have these golf carts, if you see your kids on them, or like impound them, I'm just asking.
Here's. I'm gonna say this, I think it would be best to let Stephen research, because then it's hard to legislate someone to be a good player.
And that's probably been tried. Just saying. And it didn't work.
What was it?
It didn't work, and it didn't work. We try to be pretty, you know, pretty, pretty focused, baby, here in Green. You end up, you end up having to go legally, you know, with the law, to get somebody to up to their parents to understand. And monetarily, that's why I asked earlier, I said, after the first offense, is there a monetary value against the second offense? Because, you know, when you hit pieces on their pockets though, they tend to take care of their kids a little bit better.
Steve got that, he'll bring that up.
That's a question, well, you know, over here on Waterfront Street, I've lived there for twelve, thirteen years, and it's always been waterfront. And for here lately, it's been water street front, water street, or maybe the first thing that people know is our address. And it's, our address, it says waterfront, my driver's license says waterfront, my deed of my house says waterfront. The post office says it's Water Street, Water Street's out route two. So we're having so much troubles, Robin is, our new neighbor's down the street's having trouble with the driver's license, and, you know, it's just a mess. And we need to get that straightened up, and, you know, I'm sure, you know.
That's handled by the county, eighty-nine-one-one says.
Well.
Issue as well, because Google has, like, my mind have a delivery truck to show me your wrong address, because we're using Google to get that. So Google sometimes has to create some wrong addresses with.
If you do a Google, uh, Earth, it's waterfront, you do GPS, it's waterfront, if you do Water Street, it's out route two. FedEx knows it's out route two, like the I-Boards, they do FedEx, and it goes to route two. It has a calendar here, and it's a mess, and it's been like that for a while.
I'll call Paul in the morning to see what, um, what's been solicited.
It really needs to be taken care of, because, you know, we're all having problems.
Have you talked to the post office?
Uh, well, I asked the post office, and they says it's Water Street, Water Street's out route two. My driver's license says waterfront, my deed of my house says waterfront, my mail comes in Water Street front, or waterfront street front. I mean, it's a mess, it's, it's, there's no consistency at all with.
Ninety-nine-one-one centers one over the address.
How do you call them at that, um, you told me that the other day.
Four-seven-three-one-four-one.
Okay, because I didn't get the call yet. We've had to go out front street for mail.
Yeah, that could be a diligent computer system, where I call Paul in the morning to see what's going on, but appreciate it. Let's see what it is, is there anybody else? We lose the office. I'm gonna get the hour report, and then we'll build into everything. Total fire orders completed, uh, from the month of July was a hundred and twenty-two. A hundred leaks repaired, thirty-five service leaks, three main leaks. Water taps, we got to look at, but I'm gonna guess and say that there was at least thirteen water taps that was put in. Water loss is thirteen percent, which is exceptional. It'll show you there that gallons of leaks flushing, we completed seventy-two delinked bill cutoffs. Uh, several of us have done leak detection in Cherokee, Green, and Argyle, I think, those were mostly your service lines leaks. FEMA disaster four-eight-six-four, uh, that's a new disaster, that started with several water mains, the service lines exposed. That approximate cost is a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Those have been ran through FEMA as well. Uh, Roger went to West Liberty, Kentucky, for the Apple meeting briefing last week, to kick off the new disaster, is required to get the funds, the city. Disaster, excuse me. Disaster four-eight-sixty is in its five stages, uh, we met with FEMA reps, the last twenty-third, where we asked companies to contract her, and he here is also. Look at Fifth Street, to Section Street Bridge. And then on the. We have approval. Places the old bridge on 5th Street. And logs go over on 6th Street. Places around. Roger. Is where our office and I am. He says, uh, well, should know something in Mexico. Fire calls eight. Police calls 710. Steve Warrick, the fire chief is, uh. Certified now. Building inspections. He has an email sent in Frankfurt to be de-activized. Uh, he can do the inspections now. We're in the process, like I said, of getting it de-activized. And, uh, he's gathering some ordinances from other cities. And we want to hand them off to Steve's office. And we will bring back a brief ordinance. You guys to look at to see if it fits the city of Green and Steen. New playground equipment installed along with the park vacations. Alpine sewer rate study that you all requested is still ongoing. I think Richard's office and Tony and Michelle are working on that. We talked about town branch already. Talking about FEMA already. We had a splash event here. It was more or less a few off of authorities committee. It was a great event. It was a fun event. I got nothing but great feedback from it. So I've decided along with others to go ahead and do another splash event on Monday, 18th. At 6:00 PM roughly 7:30. We went out and got some sponsors to, uh, fund. We've got enough school supplies to, uh, do 100 kids in this city. So, uh, the city of Green and Warrick is aboard. Good spirits donated. More construction donated. The new building system for the front office is estimated to go live on September 17th. But prior to that happen. We shut down for a couple of days. Those two days are undetermined, which is going to. If you hear, we'll say it on Facebook. On people are gonna go nuts. But it's will be scheduled, um, when the bills are already going out. 15th is already passed. So that's why we picked 9/17. And that's two days after the deadline of 9/15. We will have to be shutting down for two days. Uh, depending on case they come up. Floating in thing which is part of the water plant. Water. We got it scheduled for next month. Could be taken out and replaced. The water plant will be shut down in that meantime. We also have a tree that's laying on the exposed line. Runs through the little sandy river to our water plant. We hope to try to have it moved. I have two different contractors over there to look at it. There's no way that they can get to it because it's in the water. So we're gonna try to do it. Not sure if it can be done or not. We're gonna give it our best bet. Hiking on the pump that's out there now is leaking. And winter time's coming up. And the last time I was out there in the winter time in Ohio. I was busting four inches of ice just to get to it. So hopefully that thing doesn't give us any problems over winter. But it's scheduled to, uh, be replaced on September 7th. Uh, the switch for supply distribution with EJP. That's gone very well. I hope you guys. Couple of months ago that ended up saving us a little over $200,000. They've set up shelves over here. They've got an inventory system now set up. We're still working out some final details on that. But it's actually going really, really well. We're ordering parts. We're getting most of our parts within one to two business days. And once they get their West Virginia or Ohio offices opened up, maybe even both. Those parts will come into the center. Mountain Enterprise came and paved two roads in Green. One of them was the Dollar Store and the other was on the other side of America. Uh, we did get approval for FEMA to pave for the one beside of the Dollar General store. That's why those two were done really quickly. All in favor of the mountain, they come in. Got those done and then hopefully mountain will be back in a couple of weeks to finish the new streets that they got. Uh, we got a sign being built across the street for a park. It will just say Addison Park. And then there'll be the emblems of our logo on each side. Open house October 7th. And that fire station that will run in conjunction with fire prevention. We are also. I forgot to put that on there. Um, Steve Warwick and I are looking at having a CPR in first state class for the community. Uh, the community members can come. Hopefully the Green Business Association with the business involved. So the brief course on AEDs. And then get everybody certified as CPR first aid. They want to show up. Uh, as far as our guys here, EJP. Which is our supplier now. They're gonna come in and produce motion training. And they are also gonna get our guys certified and, uh, first aid CPR. So they'll be bored to come out about the open house and fire station. If everybody's seen the fire station prior to. What we've done, we've all been in there. I strongly encourage you to come. Some of the. We're proud of, honored of. We all should be proud of. It's only been, uh, in service for many, many years. I will tell you guys, you guys probably seen Thompson's as a very best. The term on site is up last time. So Steve Warwick and I was up there and, uh, we were going over experience. Having a lot. And guess what? We landed on the life. For our. So I mean, we picked up on all Thompson's. And we've got too much money invested in that place. We were term on site. So Thompson's is up there today to treat him. So hopefully that'll take care of that. But that is my word along with Roger Harris. We're gonna talk about all the way along here.
He's gonna be a state licensed building inspector. So he can use your building permits, if any foundation in connection.
All I have to say is legalities once he gets de-activized. Because I don't know about that. I always went to, uh, get certified in building inspection. One and two. He's gonna go and get three. But he showed today that his paperwork into Frankfurt to make it go ahead and de-activize. As far as the building inspection. What that is going to entail as far as state regulations, I'm not sure. I was just hoping he does. And then once he does get licensed. Then we're gonna have to re-plant our building inspection.
That's why it's all there.
And he's gathering one from Russell. Russell will get. I want to know how I have one. And then we'll get those to Steve. And then Steve will break the drive by. And then we insert they go wherever he goes. And we're sure to.
He did that for a long time, a long time. He'll be charged to it. It's not gonna be a service free city, but you will have to charge your service fee. I can't even deal with these things. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Richard, you are under the.
Okay.
We go to, uh, Mr. Elsberg's block plan. We may have all the. So before.
James Elsberg.
Before you. Thank you, Richard. You want to stand up and introduce yourself to explain what you're doing.
Hello, my name is James Elsberg. Uh, I'm just building, uh, trying to build a property in, uh, around myself. Eighty-four Main Street, East Main. Where Old Bridge used to go across the very last house on the.
Um, so this is the, uh, block plan application of Mr. Elsberg. He's already, uh, submitted everything through the state, uh, portion. And that's been approved through the state portion. So now comes the council approved that he has, he's wanting to build a fence, uh, there at the end of East Main. Quite close to where the old bridge is down here. And so that's what he's getting council to approve this week.
He needs to, council to approve the block plan permit. And then he is also here to ask. The sidewalk ordinance was another way with. Steve Warwick, I'm wrong. Sidewalk. It is the district. So he's also here to ask permission. Roger Harrison going over, Jeff's going over. Fence where he has it now is on the street side of the sidewalk.
Yeah, so the very edge of the sidewalk.
Doesn't impede our sewer line for what I can run for. My water line is on the opposite side of the street. There's a fire on it over there. So it doesn't impede that. He's also asking to be able to leave that fence at its current location as I heard.
Yeah, it's just post right now. That's not even a fence. Yeah.
That's some one of the things that he asked.
Yeah, it's, it's actually 12 foot from the edge of the road. And it's seven and a half foot behind the sewer line.
So let's make up the block plan. We have a motion to approve Mr. Elsberg's block plan coming up. I'll have a second. Is there any discussion?
Now like the height of that fence, you want to build.
Six foot.
Front side as a violation of the city. The waters, it's not gonna be forward to that.
Yeah, we're not doing anything in front of the house. It's off to the right hand side.
The whole fence gotta be four feet. You can't see four feet of the waters.
Okay, so in the front it has to be four?
Four feet.
Okay, I can, I'll put four feet. That's fine. I can change that. There's, there's no fence up right now. There's just. Yeah. Yeah, there's just.
Can't go past four feet on that frame.
Okay.
I don't think you should be building on this side sidewalk. I think they would do that side myself first.
Right.
But like I, well, like I said, it's okay. You get in there digging and you gotta get the, you gotta get that sewer line. You gotta do the big backs. We had a guy in the building, got killed right on the day about a week ago. So I'm very skeptical if you get enough. You have to put a box in it or something. I think you're, you stand a good chance to get that fence to shore when you're ready to get in there.
Okay.
My opinion.
So we have a motion in a second on the block plan here. Is there any discussion on the?
It's on current.
Yeah, just, yeah, just, I get what you're saying. Yeah, I understand.
So we have a motion in a second on the block. Is there any more discussion? You're open.
John Norman.
Yes.
You have Flash? Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Bill Ollie? Jamie Gillan?
So now Mr. Elsberg has asked, uh, to be able to build his fence on. Street side of the sidewalk. About seven feet from the sewer line. And waters on the other side of the road. Uh, easy area. Obviously to build it up four feet now on the front. And I'm gonna leave it up to the city council. Would you guys want to look to allow him to do that or no? We don't want to.
We're gonna have to look for shots of painting.
Okay.
Still, I think you were trying to say to him where to allow him to build it on the street side.
I think that's what we're hearing is to build the fence on this. Are we sure that should go to the fire insurance committee? So you follow.
For the block plan, yeah.
So I only want to take an help just to allow him to build it seven feet up the sewer line. On East Main.
How, uh, I know the road and sidewalk's pretty close. How can he get seven feet away from the sewer line?
I think it's seven.
The, the main is down there at the end.
The main.
Yeah.
Oh, the manhole. How about the sewer line running too?
Oh, please.
Yeah, I called 811 and they said everything is okay over there.
That's electric.
Yeah, everybody.
Okay.
I would say he's, uh, not having a look. I would say.
There's enough room to get high for whatever.
Yeah, there's enough room to get in and work.
There's not really a ladder.
In any one house. Here's the other. A shallow in down there. Directly the block this way. We have the land, like, way. Very, very shallow. I think we're having people all the way back down to the road. I saw here.
No, I'm not.
Sure.
Well, we have, we don't think we're doing it right now. So would you somebody that knows something about this, just to drop down?
Right.
Say yes or no. I don't, I don't know who you'd be able to do that.
If you could have someone draw a map up, I could. And then he could have someone draw a map up. We've got every photo of where he has it drawn.
Show it to me.
It's on the. Here's his, uh, here's where he sketched it on the, all the photo.
Make it any more familiar, make it something that are more. You can have a problem.
Um, I'm. I, if they don't move the, uh, sidewalk, I'm just worried that it's too high to win though. And I'm afraid that if we did have to work on it, that if we damage your fence. I just, I, that's, I don't want to damage your property.
Yeah, I can.
Also, I want enough space to, if we did have to do work.
Yeah.
Of course I do, you know.
Yeah, I can, I can move it to the other.
What you said is three foot. It's like a three foot.
Yeah, I can move it to the other.
I, I, I know it's hard out here.
Yeah, but I would rather move it and be able to have the fence than, you know what I mean? So.
Rather lighter.
Yeah.
I just don't want to damage your property if we have to do something. But at that time.
Right.
Yeah, you have to move that. You have to move that three foot. The sidewalk's totally.
Right.
Fence on the outside of the sidewalk. Fence four feet.
Yeah, that's old town.
Yeah.
So we have a motion in a second on the floor. More or less you guys will agree that we are allowed to have. On the inside of the fence, the frontage of the fence will be more people. We have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
You have Flash? John Norman? Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Bill Ollie?
Yes.
Um, Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
We have another, uh, block plan permit. This is a libel.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean. They didn't make, they made the water. Water bill, that type of bill for the sewer. So.
So we'll charge it to the water.
Oh, yeah, water issue.
Black panther going to the retard.
It's a miniature.
It's a long, it's a long, it's a long, very thick. So what happened is that's a laminated board. It wants to touch your body like you look like a shark. So they're very. So it's a long.
I'll have to check here. It's a 32 by 32 splash pad. 32 foot, 32 foot.
I called, I made this week. I'm here at the library. But I talked with, uh, the racist city manager. And he said that it was about six hours gallons. What happens is, is those things on the run for so long that they shut off. So there's no kids there. Shut off. If there's kids there, there's blood. You have to go get, get the blood out of them. And I was just over there monitoring some, Sunday. I think there was one, two, three, four, five, six. I think there was only seven or eight. It's raining, pouring rain.
I got a question. You said there are six or three of these.
Yeah.
So what, what else do they have to do? Just that, it's making. They have like, it's one pool. Like they've got the commitment, it's something like that.
Yeah, there's a pool, uh, nude board. Frankly, it also has.
They'll also need that, you're right.
Yes, that's.
And there, it's all guns. We're missing three things.
Right.
It's just like, like a, uh, law, like a court of law. It'll have kind of drainage system. Uh, like, name the law for drainage system. But areas.
Just approve the.
Yeah, there's all, all the points there, they're getting it to the state.
I make a motion. We got a motion on the floor. And then we got a second. Is there any more discussion? Through Roco.
John Norman?
Yes.
Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Bill Ollie?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Dave White?
We have another. John Diane Cox. Wants to do, uh. Yes. Is that water street or waterfront?
This is water street.
What, what's it say?
Water street.
That's it.
That's it. I remember water street.
She was your neighbor. It like, um, she lived in this big white house across the street. Yeah. Yeah, she was 500.
It wasn't built a fence. In the front yard.
So that's like, oh.
504 water.
That was probably 4911.
Close to the courthouse.
She probably.
Water street has waterfront down there.
Yeah, she probably.
Whoever wrote that down, they probably should say waterfront.
Water street is across the. And that's where their same address is.
Water, it says waterfront street down at the bottom. Whoever filled that out with the water. And, uh, the official one will make sure it says waterfront street.
But that ain't our address. I, I've already had this discussion.
I don't know who came up with that address. The applicant, whoever the.
My driver's license says waterfront street. My, uh, deed of my house says waterfront.
Yeah.
The post office says it's water street. Water street down the path too. So we're having all kinds of.
This is what the applicant put down.
So, of course, this thing right here is no good. I know these people. It's right down here.
Yeah.
It's not around to.
No. You just have to amend it to say waterfront.
When Mildred's like there, her address is waterfront.
So there's a, obviously.
You're like, I'll go around in the morning.
So the deed says. The waterfront, waterfront street.
But we are having all kinds of problems with that, you know, our address.
Right.
You can't get nothing delivered at waterfront street. It says it's water street. The post office says it's water street.
Tell me which it is.
I know.
We're gonna get back on track. We got a block plan permit where the address is. That's the numbers. What is it? 504 waterfront street. We all know the people they live here. Let's get serious. Give me a J or another.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm assuming that, uh, the debate is. It looks like more entertainment. I'm assuming they mean Friday night.
When I talk to the. Back, but, um, uh. Pay for the. Street front. Sideways. Black thing. Like. We can all in. Are they here? Return. No, no.
As long as it gets an end of the.
Yeah, my stuff's going up here. The weight is out.
And that's.
Having it all the way around. Just all those stuff. And that's either two. But it just doesn't say we be there. I just, if we did it in fact, we have to.
Yeah, we got one on the.
A lot of.
I make a motion to.
We got that. We have a second. Is there any more discussion?
Four foot six here, that's the name of Virginia, four foot eight six here. That's yours? That's what yours says, you can't see, four feet on the front.
Well, let's make change the order.
I was just asking. If you've done. Security reasons, when the police come by, they can't see us at six foot. That way it knows it's a busy little bit of that job.
So we have a motion in the second to approve. John and Diane Cox, this is what we might admit. Is there any more discussion? Roque.
John Norman? Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
And Dave Glass? Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Bill Dowdy?
Do you want me to say anything about the grant on the river?
Yeah.
Uh, we did get some good news, if you remember, we, uh, was in June. We, uh, did a resolution to apply for a grant. Twenty percent match. We did get that approved. Uh, a hundred twenty-five thousand, that's the city's match to the eighty percent. So it's now at the construction, now we have a hundred percent grant.
That is, when's this gonna start?
Soon as the state approves the plot hits.
Oh, okay.
And they can be very slow, so. They've had the first drafts, and now we're doing the final drafts.
So that's really good news.
Yes. I think the bidding will probably start this fall, this winter, and then probably spring. A couple updates on the water system projects, the, uh, Silone project, which was on the pipeline in the ground for well over here. We had a valve vault added to the project as well. Everything's installed in place except for the last piece of telemetry was, we're still waiting on CI Formburg. Divide that as part of that contract. So that's been the final holdup on that, just so that job can finally release. Uh, the other job, the. Sheep Hollow, Phase Nine A, and Lower Lighter Project, that pump station. We had our startup test, everyone ran great. Uh, again, another piece of telemetry that we're waiting on for CI Formburg. And we'll be able to start the final flushing and testing of the lines. Start putting people up.
Did you say we're about ninety-five percent?
About ninety-five percent. It's just been a holdup on the CI side of the final telemetry. We also had here mayor this, uh, letter about, uh, Rockland Waterline Project. Distribution.
So for you guys, this is something that we were talking about a couple of months ago. This is, uh, money from Frankfurt that was held for several months. We finally got the leases. To, um, upgrade the bottleneck on Rockland One, starting at. All the way to Ardena. So you see the line that goes up?
Six to four, eight.
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
So that's a bottleneck there. Uh, which causes us to have to purchase water. And the water a little bit flow off. So if you guys remember whenever I wrote this up a few months ago. I learned that this money was given to us. How many of the years, several years. So with inflation, as it's gone over the years, obviously we didn't have enough money. So I asked you guys to be able to let me negotiate with. Bid winner, which was Will Contra. So the only way that we ended up working. And him on to lose money, us to lose money was our guys are trained and certified to direct traffic. He was willing to have to bring in traffic control losses. State would have to. There's only a certain amount of time that he's allowed to work on this each day. There's only somebody who thinks he's going to be able to put in each day. And then they're making him reconnect the water lines back up. So I negotiated with him that we could do the traffic control for this project. It's estimated to cost about sixteen thousand dollars. So that brings it, uh. Grant down to two hundred and sixty-six one point. And then after we leave, the city responsible, Water Department. Responsible for twenty-seven thousand I O six, can be put forth to destruction. Uh, of the water line relocation. Which I will tell you probably within. Six months, I hope it's seven. So we're just gonna handle it. Also along green, or green, green boats been rolling anywhere from twenty-five gallons to fifty gallons. Uh, so. That puts a real hurt on that side of our system. Our Ardena line here. So fixing this all and that, getting more water, pulling it towards the Ardena thing. Well, I convinced them. Someone saw us being, uh, suspended on. And it's hurt absolutely not. So it's not worth it. And it will help more whenever. Green boat gets back. I heard that it's gonna be a lot after the incident. It's gonna be a lot behind. So it'll be, it's full every time. So we just need approval for. Approve, approve of administrative project for. Rockland Water Line replacement project.
I'll say.
So we have the motion, second, is there any discussion? Prove.
Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
And Dave Glass?
No.
John Norman?
Yes.
Bruce Vance?
Yes. I thought you already called her, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. Bill Dowdy?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
I have another item here, it's a, uh, resolution for a grant application. Pass it out. We submitted just last year and was unsuccessful. They reopened up the, uh, application window, called the KY Wonders. Application. This is in, we can take, we did submit it last year. So it's a resolution authorized. City to ask for this grant application.
So with this, I remember serving, I last time I was in Frankfurt. And I'm just going to use these numbers. I don't remember the exact numbers, but the whole structure for state, let's say, was a hundred million dollars. That was a lot. And they had like two and a half million dollars. So. And that's what we have against. And it's all the way around. I'm just saying, but. It's not all the same. We definitely need to. We have a motion, there's a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roque.
Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Bill Dowdy? Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Glass? John Norman?
And that's all I have for this evening.
You're here to, uh, give them a quick re-clip thanks, although what's the thing, I made some meaning about it.
Uh, yes, uh, your annual compliance report, uh, part of the, any compliance report, it's public information and execution. Phil from my office will, I'd like to do a little presentation, and that belongs with the public. That'll check one of the boxes in your annual.
Can you send me a copy of that?
Perfect. Thank you.
So do we set all the line up here? So next one on the, is the set of all. So the water. So that would be. So the motion to. So we have a motion, the second motion, John, the second, Jane. That all cleaned up? So there's a couple of little places that. Is there any discussion? Roque.
John Norman?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Glass? Bruce Vance?
Yes.
So to give you guys a, a brief on this, it's more or less. Letters of support has been asked for me to sign, and I would not sign without your guys' approval. This is a long-term plan to, uh, shut down the GJ SA Green Point Sewer Agency, which is. The work on sewer plant that is controlled by the board. And to take our sewer to G C E C in Russell. Uh, these are letters of support that I was asked to present to you all. They are going to be filing for the, um, I'm going to be filing for the same Kentucky Waters Grant. Application to, uh, make this happen if you guys go along with that. So those are the letters that are sent to me. If you're happy to ask any more questions. You guys may have. But the. Long-term plan is to. Shut down GJ SA and go to G C E C. I'm saying probably. Probably ten years. My first money of it.
What's the cost of something like that?
And the rate, and that's why.
Well, yeah, what's the cost? What's good, the five percent back end, so what's the cost for the customers down here?
Ours already goes to work. So it would be taken, that plant, GJ SA, in work to Russell. As far as a rate study or anything like that, I don't think any of it's been done. Aware of, unless I have forgotten. I think it's just a long-term funding plan, and I don't want to be shooting for free money. Like, uh. I just want to certify.
Basically, having to make any arrangements to be caused, or that's actually what happened after. We don't reckon with this right now. So I believe we need a little bit more information on what we're doing. I mean, it sounds good. What we got right here, we haven't held off.
You guys can make a motion table. Take no action at all.
This isn't just a letter of support. It's all, that's all it is, it doesn't have any honorary.
Okay, well, it's just table, you know, we just want information. I'm not a motion table.
If you go to this new system you're talking. The way I understood it, we had one person out of ten on the board on the last one, who still works right now, correct? For the rating approval, how much we pay.
On the GJ SA board?
Yeah. Okay, what would we have on this new system opposed to Russ?
We just don't have representation. You can't tell you that because the bylaws would have to be rewritten. Yeah, the bylaws would have to be rewritten. This is in the very, very beginning stage.
So you're, it's all, yeah, you don't know.
It's applying for money that. Hoping to get free money.
Yeah.
That's not a commitment on our part.
Trying to get ahead of it.
Any money. This is just a, uh, a authorization that we support. What they're trying to do.
It's all in the money too.
But we have to vote on that. We have to vote on that.
Just maybe this to see what comes up, and we'll come back. See, that's something that you said about our show, we wouldn't take them off feed, we'd do the. It would have been everything ugly in there. You count numbers. This is, this doesn't involve numbers.
Here's what I can do, is I can, I can ask. Dennis Gumber. Or I can ask a board member from G C E C, so I'll Dennis Gumber, which runs G C E C. To come down and speak, and we'll also have people over here as well, which ones agree to join the Sewer Agency. That's next council, that's what you want. I'll tell you. By that time, these will probably be going to be used to parry back. Would be my guess, but that's totally up to you, that's not my decision. That is totally your own decision. I would be more than happy to call Dennis Gumber and Pay Row, and have them come down to explain more to you guys. About the future plans of G C, E C, and the future plans of GJ SA. If that's what you guys.
I mean, we'll entertain the, the idea. And, uh, eventually, if down, back down the road, it's gonna happen. Uh, whether we want it to or not. And eventually, if down, back down the road, it's going to happen, whether we want it to or not.
Could you just, like, come out and tell us more than what this paper does? Maybe hold off that for a second.
So we've got a motion on, let's move, let's play on track here. We've got a motion on the table, to table. Second, to table. I'll ask again, is there a second to table? Hearing none, I'll open back up to further.
This is a process, it's just a show of support for the future.
Be able to file for fun.
How about the motion you checked?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Let's. If you want to say what the heck, I can take this one right up. Whatever we like. So we shut right down the hard stuff, all the way to the end. Copy. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Broke.
John Norman?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan? Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Black? Bruce Mann?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, Michelle, is fixing the tax rate. Before is your. No, you can go ahead and talk.
Um, the recommendation is to go with the compensating tax rate of .1309. That brings in the same amount of revenue as last year, $79,033,900. We calculated the maximum tax rate, which as you all know that, we have to have a public hearing and advertise in the paper. It's .1361 per hundred, and it brings in revenue of $82,173.62. .1309, so basically 13 cents per $100 of value. The mayor's correct, you all have a very cheaper tax rate.
What's, what's the fourth percent? Did we do that last year or year before?
No, we did not. We've not taken that. To do that, you actually have to advertise and have a public hearing. And your publication costs are probably close to thousands, or you're going to do all that for probably $1,000 or whatever.
Yeah. Does anyone want to hear the first reading, the order is set at 1309? In order to city grant Kentucky fixing the area, city grant tax, you have to tax your 25. I've got .1309 and the tax problem. You're going to have to have a vote in that first reading.
Second?
Uh, second one is the motor vehicle. Uh, it's at .32300 per hundred. Um, I did the taxes on a $20,000 vehicle, which would be $46 per year, as an example for you all.
Do you want to hear a first reading of that? In order to city grant Kentucky, get the tax rate, the city grant Kentucky, tax your 25. This is a motor craft, establish the rate of .2300, the tax problem. That's a first reading.
Bruce? Would you want to hear the reading? Do you want to see it? Field.
Okay, down to my head, I'll just want to make sure.
Stephen, the next one is up to you, and it's the annexation of the tail property.
Uh, the tail property seems to be ready to annex finally. That's the, that's the food park down there in Lloyd. We've got a first and a second reading, intent to annex, no objection. The state, obviously, the food park, one of the, and the state didn't have an objection either. So I just need to, need to have someone ask me, will we need final ordinance? And do you want to take a, in order to city grant Kentucky, finally annex the property to the city of Kentucky. It's a property annexed today, and then we can, and then we can, another second.
That's the actual property.
Six, they operate under the name of. I don't understand where already at the American.
Yeah, we're, they are the number of.
An emotional change? A second, Bruce, is there any discussion? Broke.
Jamie Gillan? Bruce Mann?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Black? John Norman?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, as I talked to you guys a couple of months ago about giving four part timers of pay raises. It's been several, several years since they've had, uh, pay raises. Only other way to name it is just to name off of people. Junior would get $2 hour on pay raise, this is just my recommendation, you all said it sucks. Everybody else, $1.50 underneath him, and that would be Chase. Just, just hours, huh?
Gavin.
Gavin, and then Sharon.
I just, I just want to just tell them that.
So if you look on your agenda, the $2 on the hour, it costs $4,160 per year. Benefit costs $318. Toter salary, benefit costs $4,478. Part-time employees, $1.50 per hour, salary costs $3120 per year. Benefit costs $239, for a total of $3,315.
Something to be the benefit dollars, just to say.
Not going to Medicare, anything you have to pay some employee.
$28,000 on what it costs.
It's a fair, we gave it up for a little while.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wanted to, they weren't considered as a contact.
No.
Okay.
That's current, it's current employees. It's, the, the part-time employee, the junior is a supervisor, so he was the $2. And each part-time employee would cost $3,359.
Times three.
Yeah, I didn't.
Times three, that's not just 31.
No, no.
No, you're coming up. Yes, the word, which one does that one come out of?
The utility fund, they all come out of the utility fund, use pure utility fund has a healthy contingency test.
Starred or regular half, huh?
What?
Starred or regular half?
I think it's like $10, yeah.
All part timers, six, including junior.
Junior's $10.
Junior's like 12, or 15.
And it's been, it's been $10 for like 10 years. It's been like a long, it's been crazy. So. Yeah, it's been a long time. She's been here about 10 years. She should be up here longer than that, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt those hourly wage increases. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. I would, I don't know, it's just me, I like to keep the supervisor at least a dollar, a bit, a difference in from the regular workers, like maybe $2.50 per hour, and then $1.50 for them.
He still will be hired?
Yeah, he's hired now, but I want to keep him. And in my opinion, I want to keep him in that, but it's up to whatever the owner.
He still will be hired, but are you saying he will be a little bit more hired?
It should be another $1,150.
The expenses.
Yeah.
So hold on just a second. Just make sure we're following the rules here. So Mark, you're suggesting what?
Uh, $2.50 per hour.
For junior?
Yeah.
And how much for everyone else?
The same, $1.50 like it stays, not changing them, just moving him up the hire.
Who made that motion?
I did.
Are you upset? Who made the second? John Norman or you upset? Is there any more discussion? To those changes? Broke.
Bruce Mann?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy?
Yes.
You need to get a tax rate. Unless the P G S A, or Jamie Gillan, but you need to get a tax rate.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
And Dave Black?
And the home side exemption is one of the, one of the, one of the bounds on it.
Next item on the agenda.
I don't know exactly how many.
It's the second major here is 4th of July event. Obviously, July 4th is out because Don Ball won't do it then. And the reason being, you may ask me this early in time, is I think I've got Hammer Town for a very good price to come perform, uh, the July 4th event. And I would recommend it being July 3rd, that way we can clean up on July 5th.
That'd probably be better for so well. It'd be better for the citizens, so everybody else would go somewhere else on July 4th.
That'll be on Friday, July 3rd. So we have a motion and a second for administrative celebration for July 3rd. Is there any discussion? Broke.
John Norman?
Yes.
Jamie Gillan?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dave Black? Bruce Mann?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy?
Don't run off it because there's one item that we've got to discuss. Make sure there's going to be plenty of questions, hope I can answer some of them, although I'll not be able to. But the city of Flatwoods, and I believe the city of Russell, has already approved their council. Stephen represents Flatwoods, so I think he'll be able to attest to this. I think their wording was, was to go along with a regional study for, for a study for a regional water. That does not mean that the green is going to get shut down. Doesn't mean anything other than those cities are asking to go in together and possibly even a third party even paying for the study. I was asked to bring, for you guys, to see if you guys were in favor of joining in on such a venture. That would be no money out towards the city agreement. One thing it would be, would be a study performed by somebody, paid for by somebody. I think what Flatwoods done was, was they made a motion and more or less worded that they would go along with other cities and adopt to have a study performed. And that's, and that's about doing what they done. That's a very varied area. I was asked to bring that to you guys, and I'm dumping it on you guys now. If you guys want to join along, or if you don't, I can't make that decision for you. Again, it's no money out of our pockets, but we'll get a study done by somebody. Don't know who, don't know who's going to be paying for it.
Well, one thing I've got to say is, if, if we were to say yes to that, it, it makes us look like that we're giving up on our own water plant, and we're not. We want our own water plant. So I'm saying, I'm saying, knowing tables next is, I'm not.
It's just a study?
It doesn't matter, if we, if we, if we get involved with that, and our name is with part of that, then I might as well say, I see that too, well, they don't really, they're not really.
Is that what we just agreed on on this other study, was just checking out to see what was?
Well, we don't, we don't have supervisors' staff.
No.
So this is actually the livelihood of Reno. I mean, most of our.
Some sewer plant livelihood of Reno.
We don't have any sitting here, we, we do next sitting before we hear.
We have one sitting, we have one sitting.
Yes, it is. One contract. One contract labor, which these losses in your distribution part of your services. You have to have that person, because it's our, our, our income.
But, I mean, ours, our water department brings in, it's just our, our income. I was just afraid, a guy like them, someone downstate sees that, and we're live for grants and all this stuff. And they can see that as a spolting, and say, we'll go to the drought instead of that, I'm just.
But like I said, it's just a study, we don't have a plan for anything. We see what's going wrong with the study.
So your options are to do nothing, to take, or know where you're at.
They have, you know, they have to, uh, make a motion to vote on.
Who? Where you can take?
I make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor to table entering into agreement with other cities for a regional water. We have a second. John Norman? Bruce, wait the motion. So we have a motion and a second to table, is there any discussion? Broke.
Bruce Mann?
Yes.
John Norman? Dave Black? Mark Harris?
Yeah. I don't want that, I'm not working anyway, but I'm thinking.
Jamie Gillan?
Six here. That is all that's on your all's agenda? If we have a motion, on the table for the chairman?
I'll make a question.
How about you, Chris?
Yes, Dorothy is here, she's on the tourism committee. Actually, they donated $15,000 to the fireworks, I think, and Josh, and Josh is right there, he's on the tourism. They donated $15,000 to the fireworks. They had a special meeting, it was about a week, week and a half ago, to donate $10,000 to Old Fashion Days. I've got a check link on my desk, talked to Joey Codeiron today. Joey Codeiron's going to get with me tomorrow, and we'll go present that to, probably Ann Stevens, I'm assuming. She's still the chairman of Old Fashion Days. Uh, they got a request in for a PA system that we're going to be taking up in September. There's been some discussion of a time capsule, and there's been discussion of some murals and some street framework. Those meetings are open to the public. The next meeting, I'll have to get to Joey. I didn't put it in my calendar.
September 11th?
11th, September the 11th is the next meeting. You're more than welcome to attend.
So, my next question, sorry.
Right here, please, sir, right here.
So my next question is, we already got fireworks, we don't want to get a big crowd. So my next question is, we already got fireworks, we're gonna be getting bigger and more, I can see that helping tourism. And Old Fashion Days, it's, it's old Fashion Days, it's on track.
Here's what I can tell you, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, so you're asking me a loaded question, because legally, I don't have any say-so more than you guys, in how the tourism money is set.
We don't, but we operate the money, we operate the money, we bring in the money.
Stephen, I'll move further.
The tourism committee is, decides how the nice, the statues, so the city acts, whether it's Green Apple Russell, or Chrysler, wherever the city acts, pays and collects, and the tourism will spend. So, in order to affect that, whoever wants to affect it, just import it. Because that's the people who vote in, it's the same, the exact same procedure as Russell.
It's just like the hard attacks, it's like the hard, electric attacks, it's more support. Electric attacks, for you see, right?
Tourism is, we're here to profit. More people here to spend the money, right? We only got so much.
I've got two board members sitting here, and I'm, and I'm attending the last meeting, so I brought up what's, I'd like to do a time capsule. And everybody that lives in the city of Greens, they would come to some of their heritage, or their family's heritage, into a time capsule, and have it, you know, put over in the park, twenty-five years, dig it up, thirty years, dig it, to dig it up. For a long enough years, so I brought it up, and that's fine, I've got two board members sitting here up now, that can attest to that. Hopefully, I'll bring it back up again, and I might get a little bit of traction.
Basically, my question is, what can we do to actually bring people in, I mean, you got the committee now, what are we doing to actually bring people in into this area? I mean, we just a mile wide, five miles long, what are we doing?
I think you would have to give tourism committees to, they were just established. I'm not speaking then, they were just established, and they've got, they've got speakers coming, and want to tell a guy, them alone, they've got Facebook page now, working on a website, and they've got the wheels in motion. I think it's just, you've got to give them some time, get up on. Not only does it bring people in, though, it can go to your parks, various other things that it can do.
So, that could be, I'm not fitting anybody, that could be just another slash fund, because they, they don't want to be with it, I mean. All right, I mean, if they want to donate, that's just another slash fund for, whatever you want to do. It's not bringing in any tourism, that's just, it's just extra money.
Whatever who wants to.
Anybody, anybody.
I can speak for Old Fashion Days, we really scrape up every dime we've got, to do what little bit we can do with the money, comes out of our pockets, the volunteers, and they hand us more money than we've ever had since I've been on that board, which means we can furnish more activities. This year, we can give more activities to the families that come, not just music and stuff like that, so you'll see a big difference in Old Fashion Days.
So what does the city make off there?
Well, out there, go ask Big Fair at Wendy's and all those places, and that's the liquor store, that's what I tell you.
All of them pay taxes.
Yes, yeah, and that's all tax, and some of that money goes right back into the tourism. So it's, you know, if you're a volunteer on some of these nonprofits, shouldn't they be asking? Because I'm telling you, we take money right out of our pockets. Beautification, we took pain out of our colleges, Wendy's out of our colleges, we donated stuff for a year and a half, until we started having talk on Tuesday, that's how we raised our money.
Didn't Virgin, lived that money for that?
This, this year, this year.
It's a team, it's a budget.
It's twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six voted, twenty twenty-five, no. I came in January, had to make my report of what we did last year, and asked if you all agreed first, that's some of the money, and you actually did, and we took a hundred percent of that money, and it's sitting out there on the highway, very, it's trigger.
Trigger, is that the name?
The more, the more things we can offer during Old Fashion Days, more people come into town, more activities in churches make, they sell lunches, the library banks, donations to the library, and stuff like that. We gotta bring people in, like, how do you want to come in for you?
Are we liable by the state, or someone above us, to spend every dime that comes in that year, or can we hold over some for next year, in the words?
Can you hold it over by KRS?
Yeah, can, can it stay in the, you know, or do we have to spend it by the yearly sum?
Right, talking about the tourism money?
Yeah, you know, any of them. Okay.
You can build up here.
That's what I'm asking.
If you wanted to take on a new street scape, it'll cost three times the amount of money that you want to bring in.
You choose to be.
Pick out a few things that you want to support that after your, save your money, and redo the sidewalk, or the street lights, or whatever you want. Roughly, what I reported on last time, seventy-eight thousand?
Seventy-some thousand.
I know every event that we have in Green, if we rent a stage, so one day for a stage, twenty-five hundred dollars. Old Fashion Days, three days, seven hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars, up there is ten thousand dollars. Tourism in a year will have the building, the five stage, that can be used by five Fridays, October. We have four October festivals in downtown Green, if there's four of them, we can, that can be used each night on there, but they can use it for a week, and that, that'll be paid for, we can pay that back within three years. If they, you know, there's all kinds of things that can be done. Well, I would say in a year's time, there's probably twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars that goes out of the nonprofit, just for a stage, that's just a stage. That's not the sound system, or the lights, or the operator to operate that, you can add another five thousand on top of that. So, that's a real good use for that money, it will take about a year, maybe two years to get there, but it's gonna take it for us. You probably make money with other small cities, right? Yeah, why is people allowed to rent it out to other cities? Steve, we're not allowed to rent something out to other cities like that.
Oh, I wouldn't go that far, if we make money on it.
No, I wouldn't.
How much would they pay? I mean, I'm, I'm in.
But if you want to see what that tourism money can do, join the nonprofit and rent it, and you'll see what it can do, it's more help.
I love that you mentioned a time capsule, it's the city of Russell's, we don't have it right now, and the person that lives in our city is donating all for it.
I'm over to this question. I'll bring it back up there. So that's all that's on the agenda, unless anybody else outside of you want to entertain a motion. We already have a motion about Bruce, Eric, be a second to the term. Second, I feel, all the favors they have.